Yeah, there you go.
How you doing?
And we want to do more of our office, no matter how old, just we put up in a folder and we're trying, we have one that's in a binder, but we're not putting something.
Mark, I come back to be the, so welcome to everybody to the city's chambers, please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the justice for all. On Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Pastor Aldous, would you leave us an invitation?
Good evening, good evening. Heavenly Father, as we approach the throne of grace, we're so thankful for your goodness, for your mercy. We would ask you now, Father, that you would give wisdom and direction as this commission meets. We thank you for everybody present, we thank you for all the goodness, so many times, Lord, we forget how blessed we are already. Thank you for everything you've done for us, we now ask that you would help us, and we cry out to Heaven, Father, and we say, "Help." Scripture says, "I will rise up my eyes unto the mountains, for work cometh my help." Our help comes from thee. So, Father, for every need that this city has, for every need that every individual has, for every need that anybody, everybody that's here has, we cry out to you and ask for help. We're thankful for everything you've done for us, we ask you now to bless this meeting and everything about it, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Please be seated.
Action, action on items discussed in executive session. Item A, discuss an action regarding items of pending litigation as discussed with legal counsel in executive session.
Mayor, I would move that we ask counsel to proceed as advised in executive session.
Second.
Can we have a motion, if we're going to use second position, and we'll be able to make discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I would say, I know what it's about, I don't mind what it's about, so do you know what it's about? Because it came before P U B. Okay, next item?
Next item is the mayor's report.
As MPO chairman, for the past two and a half years, working together with all the other cities, we've been able to secure, with the help of our state and federal agencies, a five eleven thirty million for State Highway, ten million, for Morrison Road, scheduled pending project ten million. In total, projects, bridge replacements, two hundred thousand, for another pending project, we get one sixteen for F F thirty twenty eight. Total, I think, funding, so, mayor of two thousand seven, I think, it's going to be around sixty-five million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, sixty-seven cents. This is for road improvements, bridge improvements, through the MPO, which the city is part of, and I have the honor to serve as chairman, and I want people to know that we're working on your behalf, trying to do the best we can to get this much funding through the state and through the federal government. Okay, the other thing I have on here is the humanitarian effort to Haiti, for Haiti. Bishop Peña made a call for humanitarian effort to help the Haitians there, and I responded to that call on behalf of the city commission and the citizens of Brownsville, to find a way how we can best raise money in a quick, short of time, and we're going to try to do it through the P U B, asking the customers to donate five dollars. We have about fifty-four thousand households, and I think if we all come together and respond, I think we can raise a good amount of money to help with the relief effort in Haiti for that devastating earthquake. Making an effort to contact the downtown revitalization of people from San Diego to come down here, things have been very quiet on that front, as far as no movement, and looking to work with them on the Weir project, the River Walk, and the downtown revitalization, now that the Weir project has become a viable project, and hopefully we can all come together to make that project happen. Brownsville pause, I think the community responded very well to the brutal killing of a defenseless animal, and asking that this case be treated not as a misdemeanor, but a felony, and we're reading the letters to the editor, hopefully the response will be one appropriately for the crime committed against a defenseless act that is also part of our society, when people take those kind of actions, usually they do the same thing with humans, and to avoid perhaps a child being hurt by these people that need treatment, of course, hopefully the, the crime will be upgraded to a felony. The Weir project status, I talked to I B W C today, the minute orders being sent to the State Department on the agreement, binational agreement of both countries, on the cost of the project, the operation project, and the maintenance of the project, and I think that will be something good for Brownsville to help us prepare for the future. I met with Ms. Timmer on the plastic bag, she had a meeting with the Sunrise Mall as sponsor of the plastic bag ordinance, I was proud to hear of her report, which she says that we're all very enthusiastic to support, and they're behind the ordinance that this commission passed, and also we're getting calls from other cities around the valley, wanting to know more about our ordinance, that they would like to consider passing a similar ordinance, heard from Laredo also, they're looking to do the same thing, I think that's good for our environment, it's good for our community, and it's also good for our landfill, and in the long run, I think it's going to transfer into some economic dollars for everybody here, because a pretty city helps us bring tourism and put a better, better face for our visitors. And the mayor's activities, of course, meetings and travel to Victoria again, and just the general complaints I get and forward to the city manager or staff, that needs to be done, I try to tend as many meetings as I can, I just had one with a B D C, and it was very positive, constructive meeting. And then we have the announcement of Mayor Potem, Deputy Mayor Potem, as the, as it was called for when the city commission adopted to rotate the position, this is not an elected position, and this position only comes into effect when the mayor is incapacitated, out of town, that he can't perform his funk, duties, or is dead. So far, so far I've been able to function as mayor, so Mayor Potem would come into effect as a appointed position to perform the duties of mayor if he can't do it, so I think the rotation is, who's next? For the rotation?
There's the rotation sheet that we got.
For the period of January, for the period of January through March, the mayor Potem would be Commissioner Camario, and the deputy mayor would be Commissioner Atkinson.
So that's the announcement, I'll give you my vote on it, okay? So that'll be Commissioner Camario, okay? And that's it for the mayor's report, commissioner's report, Commissioner Charlie Atkinson, District Two.
Well, how y'all doing today? I just want to talk a few things about our sports park, I am the chairman of the B C I C, I'm a chair of board where this board is, captures a quarter of a cent sales tax, and, you know, I read the papers and I read some of the blogs, and a lot of people are confused where this money comes from, you know, they're saying, hey, we should use this money for streets, I agree, but you know what? We follow the laws, and the laws of our B C I C board is that we use this money for quality of life projects, it can only be used for that, we're mandated by the state and by law to use these funds for quality, quality of life projects. This sales tax, it's, it's taxes that come into the city when you buy a Coke, when you go to a restaurant, when you go to H E B and buy something, you pay a tax, it's that tax, you know, to say, there's a, there's a belief out there that we're using your tax money, that you pay the Cameron appraisal district or your property taxes, and we're using that to waste money at the sports park, it's nothing like that at all, and, you know, if I didn't know better, if I wasn't in politics or city commission, I'd probably think the same way, because I just didn't know any better, but it's, it's time that we share this with you, so you'll know that, you know what, they are building stuff out there, but that's what that money's for, you know, it's not to build streets, because the city builds streets. B C I C is a nonprofit corporation, so the, the sales tax, when you go buy Fritos or whatever you buy, that tax that you pay goes to this board that I'm on, and it goes to the four A board, which is the G B A, Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation, so these, these boards serve that purpose for the citizens of Brownsville, so I want to make that clear. Another thing on, on the sports park is our beach cove, I don't know if y'all, anybody's been out there, but we've built this massive beach sand area, where in the future, hopefully the next month, we'll have a ribbon cutting to, to, for the citizens of Brownsville to go play beach volleyball, beach soccer, it's a huge little area that we built out there, it's going to be really nice for the citizens of Brownsville to go out there and enjoy. The next one was P U B, and I just want to let the people know out there that P U B board, by a close margin of forty-three, approved raising the wastewater rates for the citizens of Brownsville by eighteen percent this coming year. My belief is that we have to do better on who we put on this board, because it greatly affects the pocketbooks of each and every citizen, you know, they did a study at P U B, but they didn't take in consideration the stimulus money that P U B's been getting, the forty-six million that, that was given to P U B, and other type of, of grant monies that P U B's been getting, so to force a rate, a hike on the citizens of Brownsville is, to me, irresponsible, without looking at all the alternatives. Thank God it comes before this commission, and I urge each commissioner here and the mayor to dig deep and find out what's, what's best for the citizens right now during this economic downfall. There are alternatives, there are different ways to, to, to get things done at P U B, the simple things always raise rates, I don't believe in that, I don't believe in raising taxes, I don't believe in, if there's alternatives, if there's no choice, there's no choice, but I think in this case, we have a responsibility to you, the citizens, to look at every option, and I'm very disappointed the way the P U B board approved this rate increase, and I urge my fellow commissioners to, to, to ask questions and find out why this happened, and, and hold people accountable, because that's what we're here to do, hold people accountable, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Zamora.
Yes, I had the fortunate opportunity to participate in the toy drive that the police department conducts every year, and this year they distributed more than five thousand toys to children from the community, so I want to applaud them for their efforts, this is something that they work on year round. I know that the fire department also had its respective toy drive, but I don't have the information on that, but I want to thank both departments for all their hard work, and there are way too many staff members and community members who have participated, and some local businesses who have donated items, so just want to give a general thank you to everyone, and congratulate the police department for their hard work, Chief Garcia, thank you very much for you and your staff, for all your hard work on that. And then Old Portisable Road, I just wanted to let some local residents know who live in that area, that there will be some construction beginning tomorrow, they are going to be widening the shoulders, and there will be some smoothing of the road, and eventually sometime this year, there will be an overlay, so you'll finally see some improvement on Old Portisable Road, so thank you so much for Public Works, and I've been working closely with our assistant city manager, Jeff Johnson, on that, so thank you very much. And then on the trails, many of the trails do pass through my district, so I wanted to let the community know that we have put up some lights on the trails, every five hundred feet, there's some lights that have been put up, there are water fountains as well, I know we have a PowerPoint presentation to show some of the photos. This is just some basic information on the trail update, and how the lights are extending from Sixth Street all the way to F M five eleven, and they should all be turned on by mid and ed, and the end of February. They're working diligently on that through tomorrow as well, we'll see some lights beginning to be turned on Galveston Road and Coffee Port within the next two weeks, and you can just kind of skim through all the photos, but just to let you know what they look like, and some of the crews who have been working diligently on this. Where the water fountains are located, Boca Chica, Price Road, behind the event center, Alton Glor, and the end of the trail at Aurora Street. Your fountains, at your break areas along the trail. And those are your barriers to prevent any traffic from driving onto the trail. And there's also been some patchwork in some of the cracks that some people have called in to report. The Parks and Recreation Department have worked very hard on this, I want to thank them for doing this, and I know this is something that the community has been looking forward to for a very long time, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Durham?
I'll be brief, over the weekend we had a graffiti cleanup, we had about eighteen volunteers, and twenty-eight sites in total were cleaned up between eight-thirty and, and eleven-thirty this past week, and I want to thank Hilario De Leon and Public Works and Santana for all their help with, with getting materials and, and helping us, helping us clean up Brownsville. I also want to thank Municipal Court, Judge Nice, for help providing the paint, he's very, he's been very instrumental, as well as providing volunteers, which is very, very helpful in trying to cover as many sites as possible, if you drive around and, and throughout the town, I think we covered each district on Saturday, so we weren't taking care of one versus the other, but we had a lot of help, great people and good kids, and I want to thank them personally for their efforts in helping us clean up Brownsville, and all this is again to help keep, help keep Brownsville beautiful. At the next meeting, one of the things I'm going to hopefully try to do is, is introduce something I came up with called Green Minute, and that's to try to talk to the, talk to the community a little bit about what we do in the city to, to be a greener community, but what we do, what we can do at home, what our families, and what we can do in our workplace, and all this is going to be done to help again motivate families and, 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 you know, local leaders, and, and just kind of get everybody involved to start thinking a little bit greener, and some of the things that we could do, we go through a lot of waste, you know, daily, and there's things that we can do that we don't really stop and think, that could help the environment, and that could help us save money, so hopefully at least once a month, I will introduce a topic to city commission meeting in hopes that people can start being a little bit more aware of some of the things that we can do to, to help our environment. And last, we, we're going to have a West Side meeting, I've been meeting with a group of residents for the past couple of months over some issues in, in certain parts of the district, and what I wanted to do was open it up to a majority of, if not the entire district, to hear their concerns, because I realize that sometimes we, we hear certain issues from segments of our, of our district, but it's important to invite everyone, and so with that, I'm always learning, and I want to make sure that I cover as much ground as possible, and sometimes the better way to do, the best way to do this is to bring people together and, and start to have a dialogue session over some of those issues, so on Monday, February the fifteenth, I'm going to have a meeting at five-thirty at the West Side Community Network Station along two eighty-one, so I invite residents in District Four to come, talk with me, and we'll have some representatives from the city, there's always code issues that come up, ban in properties issues, and, and, and yes, a lot of crime activity, so I really appreciate Chief Garcia and his staff, because they've always been very helpful to the residents, and starting neighborhood watch programs, and helping them understand manpower situations and, and things that they can do to protect themselves and their homes, so we look forward to that. And lastly, on Saturday, the twenty-third, this Saturday, this coming Saturday, the J K Family Night Clinic is going to have a carnival, a carnival for one to six P M, and all proceeds will go to help the humanitarian, humanitarian efforts in Haiti, they want to invite as many people to come, again, J K Family Night Clinic, with, with Dr. Hussein and Dr. Bondi are, are leading this effort to help try to raise money through this carnival, to help, to help our, to help the, the people in Haiti, and so hopefully we can all help and, and participate in hopefully make that event very successful. That concludes my report.
I would like to let everyone know about an event that the City of Brownsville Health Department, in collaboration with the School of Public Health, have, have devised and designed very ingeniously to start the year of two thousand and ten off with a healthy foot, where the design is called the Brownsville Biggest Losers Project or Campaign, it will start on February the twelfth and thirteenth, and run for twelve weeks, ending May the fourteenth and fifteenth. Opening night and registration will be February the twelfth at the Parks and Rec Center, Chris Patterson's office, which is, many people know as the former Boys and Girls Club on Eighth Street, and the following day, we will have an event at the Farmer's Market, the ending location will be May fifteenth at the Brownsville Sports Park to celebrate, the team of the Health Department and the School of Public Health will be arranging monthly activities at different parks in each quadrant of the city, to include mileage information, activity information, all of which will be free, walk runs, bike rides will be planned within those four quadrants of the city as well throughout those twelve weeks, and we are looking for as many people to join us and celebrate and practice health for two, twenty-ten. Each commissioner will be involved and, and lead a walk or run event in their prospective quadrant, and the School of Public Health has been very generous in providing twenty-five hundred dollars of cash prizes to winners in different categories. We are encouraging businesses around the community to match those funds, so if you are a, let's say, City of Brownsville employee who happens to win two hundred dollars, we are hoping to encourage the City of Brownsville to match those funds, or whatever employer that you do have. Eligibility includes the fact that you have to be eighteen years or older, you obviously cannot be pregnant, you have to have a general health that is in keeping with participation, and throughout the twelve-week period, information will be on website, as well as in each park, about healthy eating and active living, to raise the awareness not only of the parks that are right in our backyard, but also of the importance of healthy eating, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Durham, and now let's move to item three, proclamations, Senator Eddie Lucio Junior, please come forward, your family and...
I'd like to say something real quick, it was, it's with great pleasure that we put this on our agenda today, I don't know if many of y'all know, but Mr. Eddie Lucio's been serving a long time for this community, he's born and raised in Brownsville, Texas, and other cities have, have done this, and I'm proud that we can add to other cities that are recognizing Senator Eddie Lucio for his service, because of twenty years of service, so we'll read this over there. Okay, I'm going to read this, it's a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, that's dating January twentieth, two thousand and ten, has Texas Senator Eddie Lucio Junior Day in our city, whereas Eddie Lucio Junior is a native son of Brownsville, a nineteen sixty-three graduate of Brownsville High School, and a nineteen seventy-two graduate of Pan Am, Pan American University in Edinburgh, now U T Pan Am, with a Bachelor of Science degree, and whereas Eddie Lucio Junior was elected to the Texas Senate in nineteen ninety-one after holding many office, public offices, including Cameron County Treasurer from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-eight, Cameron County Commissioner nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty-two, and a member of the Texas House Representatives nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety, and whereas Senator Eddie Lucio Junior currently chairs the Legislative Committee on Aging, serves on the Interagency Task Force on Children with Special Needs, and is a member of the National Council of State Legislators and Southern Legislative Conference, and whereas Senator Eddie Lucio Junior has received numerous awards, including in nine, in two thousand and nine, the Visionary Leadership Award from the Combined Law Enforcement Agencies of Texas, the Legislative Honor Roll, the eighty, eighty-first Legislative Session, from the Texas Watch, and Outstanding Service Recognition, from the Office of Rural Community Affairs, and whereas Senator Eddie Lucio Junior participates in two events for which he is perhaps most proud of, his Scholarship Fund, Texas Legends Golf Classic, which provides five hundred dollar scholarships to over sixty deserving students. to over sixty deserving students, male and female, from each participating high school in the Senatorial District Twenty-Seven, and a donation of turkeys each year at Thanksgiving for needy families in our community. And whereas Senator Eddie Lucio Jr. is known as the father of the Regional Academic Health Center, which is RAC, and is also, was able to pass a bill during the eighty-first Legislative creating the University of Texas Science Center, South Texas. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by Charter of said city, and on behalf of our citizens, do hereby designate January twentieth, two thousand and ten, as Texas Senator Eddie Lucio Jr. Day in our city, and further thank him for his long years of hard work and, in behalf of our community. Done on this day, the nineteenth day of January two thousand and ten, signed by our Mayor Padilla Mala and the rest of the City Commissioners.
Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Secretary, City Manager, and all the employees that make up the governing body of this community that I love so much, my hometown, our hometown, Brownsville, Texas, I'm honored, but I'm humbled as I represent this community in Austin, a five-county area. Obviously, can't help but think of my hometown every time we take any kind of action in Austin. As I was driving over here, I was just thinking and reminiscing of all the things that have transpired in this great community of ours. I thank the people of this community, I know the people of this community, thank each and every one of you for your service. These are historic moments that obviously will be looked at and read by future generations in terms of what we did together and the positions that the citizens of this community have afforded us to represent. I take my job, as you take your job, extremely serious, but to have an opportunity to partner up with you is just a dream come true for me. What I was thinking about and driving over here, and I told my wife, many who have been married to me for forty-one years, thank God, I says, you know, when I was run over by Kalunga Bus Company right here in front of the St. Joseph's Academy, they sat me on those steps at Sacred Heart Catholic Church. I remember those days, just like yesterday. It was the Sisters of Mercy that put me back together again, along with some very fine doctors in this community. And then our public schools, obviously, did their job as they did for many, many citizens over the years. I attended a little school called First Ward. The principal there was Mrs. Skinner. So you know what that school evolved to, Skinner Elementary. Then I was transferred over to Los Ebonas Elementary. Our principal there was Mrs. Sharp, and later that became Sharp Elementary. And then on to Stell, and then on to Central, where I met probably one of the greatest mentors I've ever had in education, that was the late Simón Rivera, your principal, Mayor, and principal of many others that have lived in this community and have moved to other parts of the country. And then on to Brownsville High, where the late Raúl Bustedo and Nuko Oliva and many others, Homer Hannah, I can name them all, came together and really provided the type of leadership in our educational system that afforded us one of the best educations in Texas, in the country. So I look at all of that, and I'm thankful that I was able to have parents that preached Americanism and patriotism to their ten kids. I was thankful that I was able to raise my own family here in town and have two beautiful children. My eldest is a public school counselor in our community here, and of course Eddie, who has joined our team, legislative team, who has contributed long hours of his time to improve the quality of life as we would like to see it. So much that I could talk about, so much I'm proud of what this community has become. I still see Brownsville as the greatest community in South Texas, not only in population, human resources, but in all the amenities that are in this great community. The city, the Port of Brownsville, our public school system, our university, our international bridges that join two great communities internationally, our strong culture that drives this community. All of this, plus the leadership over the years, helped us forge the type of relationships and partnerships in our state and our country, Austin and Washington, and across the border to the south to bring this community to what it is today. We're real proud of the activities that take place here. Charlie Hayes, Mr. Amigo, and everything else that happens in this community takes leadership. It takes you to be able to exert the efforts necessary to make things happen. I'm happy to reflect back and know that I knew many of you growing up, most of you, not all of you, as youngsters, and all your parents. And I'm just pleased that you have decided to serve in public office, because once you do that, I think we're never the same again. We get to know specifically what the needs and concerns of our public is. We get to be able to meet and do things that help shape our communities in the future. I'm proud of the fact that this session, this last session, we were able to finally, you know, get to the crossroads on a health science center of the future that will bring not only medical professionals, much needed in our community in South Texas, in the Valley, but also the economic impact will be enormous. The infrastructure and our highways that finally have connected us swiftly. I take that highway now, it used to take me an hour and twenty minutes to commute back and forth to Pan American in the old days. Today, I make McAllen in forty-five to forty-eight minutes because of the smooth flow. And those are dreams that we had back in eighty-seven, when I first went into the Texas Legislature twenty-two years ago. A highway system that would connect us from Brownsville to La Jolla and further down has finally happened. I realize that things take time. The weir dam, I know, is an issue that all of you have looked at, and I too join with you in making sure that there's plenty of water in this community, and that we apply ourselves to that, to desalination projects, and anything that deals with our natural resources, so that the citizens of this community can count on those resources in the future. Our growth depends on that. Our university is something I'm very pleased with. I remember attending Texas Southernmost College, and the only building on the land was the Tandy Building, besides the old buildings in the back. Well, today, I don't have to tell you, you've been there many times, I'm sure, on campus. You see the growth, and you see everything that has happened. And the fact that we now have a super, not just a good, but a super four-year university that affords our children and our citizens an opportunity to stay right here at home. Soon they'll have a medical school. Soon the veterans will have their Veterans Hospital. All that comes by coming together in partnership. Our leaders at the local level are the most important. We come to you, you give us direction, you tell us specifically what the needs are, because you deal with them on a daily basis. So I just want to thank you. I'm just grateful that I grew up in this town. This is really the best town in Texas, and no doubt about it. I called it Brown Town for short, but Brownsville is special, it's historic, it offers so much to so many, and we'll continue to see it grow under your boss's leadership and under the leadership of those that follow you and follow me. But I want to let you know that as we prepare ourselves this year, my son and I will offer to get together with city leaders anytime to establish your legislative program and agenda, so that we can go back to Austin next January and make sure that we have a clear vision of where we are and where we want to get. So I thank you for this in behalf of my family, my wife, many, my daughter Linda, my son Eddie, my grandchildren, and I need to mention them, Carlitos, Alejandro, and Annie, and of course, the newborn that was talking, well, you all were talking, the mayor, we apologize for that, but she's already talking her piece. But Olivia, my daughter-in-law, Jamie, and of course, I'm very proud of my son-in-law, Carlos, who is a great attorney, but also a great novelist, as all of you know. All of my family, my mother, my brothers and sisters, thank each and every one of you. I thank you, and I pledge to each and every one of you individually and collectively that I will do everything I can as your state senator in the future to do my best to represent this great community. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I'm very proud. I'm just extremely proud when I hear names that come out of Brownsville, Texas, like Billy Garza. It makes me proud when I visit my campus at Texas A&amp;... well, I still call it A&amp;I, Kingsville, it's A&amp;M Kingsville now, and they talk about the greatness of this young man, and I say, he's my boy down in Brownsville. Well, he's a young man that's made us all proud, and I know he's next in line, but I needed to tell him publicly that all of us in this community admire and respect, you know, his accomplishments and those of his parents, William and Mrs. Garza, and the teachers and everyone that had a hand in rearing this young man. I'm proud to represent him as well. God bless you all. God bless Brownsville.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a great honor, I know I've had a building on the Senate Board as well, but Mayor, thank you for supporting this office. Eddie and I would like to present to you this proclamation and have the citizens of our country, love and respect. Whereas Brownsville native William Michael Billy Garza, who is a two thousand and four graduate of the thousand and four high school, better than football, basketball, and baseball. He's elected with valuable player in this district, all three sports, and winning all state and all that, honored for his outstanding achievements on the athletic field. And whereas, rapping out the senior year of playing in the Texas State All-Star Game at Rice Stadium in Houston, Billy went on to the Big Ten University of Illinois on a full football scholarship after Brett Shurley in two thousand and four was a member of the football squad in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven, finally moving up as high as number two on the team, team chart. And whereas Billy's transferred to Texas A&amp;I at Kingsville, where he was starting quarterback in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, winning the Lone Star Conference title and making the national playoffs. Whereas Billy was a candidate for the Harland Hill Trophy, NCAA Division Two Heisman, on the basis of a career at Texas A&amp;I during which he broke ten school passing records, was selected to play in the two thousand and ten Pac-12, where his play earned him the game's most valuable player award. And whereas Billy has proved himself to be a stellar fan now. Performer on the football field, and is a proud example of determination, talent, and competitive spirit, Penn Conference. Now therefore, we, the members of City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of authority vested by Charter of said city, do hereby recognize William Michael Billy Garza for all of his achievements and accomplishments in the world of sports, and further wish him all the best in whatever future endeavor he may choose. Done on this nineteenth day of January two thousand and two year of our life, by Mayor Padilla Mala, City Commissioner Anthony Corriani, Ricardo Omoye Jr., Vanessa Examora, Rose Down, M.D., Charlie Atkinson, and Donald Edward C. Calabio, and of course, Esther
I really don't have much to say, but I would like to thank everybody. A lot of my success came through the support of the city, you know, through the good times and the bad in high school, you know, everything kinda went real well, you know, the support of the community really got behind us, and, you know, over my career at Illinois, you know, things kinda fell off. When I went back to Kingsville, you know, the support of the area just really gave me, I guess, what I needed, you know, to get to that level and to play, you know, in front of, you know, everybody from the area. So I couldn't have done it without the city and definitely without the community. And, you know, one of the main things, when you look at collegiate athletes and stuff like that, is a lot of people from this area really don't get the opportunity, you know, they figure, oh, they're too short to this, to that. But one of my main goals, you know, in going off to play collegiate sports, was to try and bring recognition to this area, because I believe there's a lot of great talent in the area, there's a bunch of great players, and I just tried to help get exposure to the area as best I could, and, you know, hopefully, you know, whatever I can do to help bring recognition to the area is what I'm about. So, thank you.
You know, anytime we recognize citizens for their achievement, whether it was the Hudson Chess Team, or Jimmy Gonzalez, or Billy Garza, or the Senator, it speaks volumes of our city. And that's why we do the proclamations, because we feel that they are our best assets of this community. They represent Brownsville, they do it very well, and they distinguish themselves from everybody else, and they deserve the recognition. I know they don't do it for the recognition, but I think it's our duty as elected officials to bring it to the attention of the rest of the citizens, what a difference they make, and what others can do themselves to achieve their dreams by working very hard, as William has here demonstrated to get there. I'm sure it wasn't easy, it was tough, it made sacrifices, and practiced a lot, and had the support of family and friends and the community, but, you know, it takes determination, and we are grateful that you represent Brownsville well, and thank you for it, and we wanted to recognize you, along with the Senator and everybody else here. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda items.
Consent agenda items A through B.
Been approved.
We have a motion to approve, and a second by Commissioner Samora. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item five.
Item five, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Airport Advisory Board.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint David Hanley.
Commissioner Samora makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All opposed, motion carries. Item six?
Item six, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint three new members to the Brownsville Public Library Advisory Board.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Fernando Champion.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Fernando Champion, reappoint him. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Did you want to say something, Mr. Edgert?
I'd like to make the motion to report, reappoint the other two. I heard that board's doing real well, and they're working together, so unless somebody has something different, I'd like to just reappoint the other two.
That's a motion by Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traiany, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven?
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and ten dash eleven hundred point forty-eight to amend ordinance number eleven hundred by readopting the Heritage Plan and dealing with related matters, including two thousand dollar penalties.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, this year marks the twenty-third anniversary of the Brownsville Heritage Survey and Heritage Plan. The city code requires that the survey and the plan be adopted every year. Survey is intended to be an inventory of all existing and potential heritage sites in Brownsville. The survey also documents any changes to the sites that have occurred in the past year. The plan intended to rank those sites according to their architectural and historical significance. The information in this update is used by the Brownsville Heritage Council to make recommendations to the zoning commission regarding modifications to the preceding year's heritage plan, then the zoning commission makes the recommendation to the city commission. Zoning passed us last week, so that's why we're here before you today. What I'd like now to do is to have Joe Gavito, the city's heritage officer, acquaint you with the changes, the five or six changes that we have in this year's plan.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. My name is Joe Gavito, I'm the heritage officer for the city of Brownsville, and if we have the PowerPoint, please. The first site we're looking at is the, the Iturri Bank, built in eighteen fifty-four. In the two thousand and nine, excuse me, two thousand and eight, physical year for tax exemptions, this particular building was blocked. The, the owner of the building came to us, got the recommendations from the Heritage Council as to what needed to be done to, to unblock and receive the tax exemption. As you see, the, and if you pass by, you'll notice that the balcony's been repaired, the, the shutters have been replaced that are broken, the sign has been replaced, the, the seal, the state, state seal is permanently attached to the building now, it used to be wired to the balcony rails. So, we've got our Iturri Bank, Bank building back to the original eighteen fifties type of look. The next, please. This is six eleven West Washington Street, no, it's not West Washington, it's East Washington, there's a correction. Milton West is the local banker, turn of the century. This is a, this, this building here is directly in front of the Compass Bank Drive-Thru, it's on the corner of Seventh and, and East Washington, I apologize for the, the type.
When was that house built?
Milton, Milton West is the historic-
When was it built?
When was it built? Nineteen hundred, nineteen ten. And this was the recommendation from the Heritage Council to, for it to receive a primary local site, which is fifty percent of the tax exemption on, on historic, historic properties. Okay, the next one. This, this is eighteen oh six Palm Boulevard, Fernando Abayi purchased this house, it's going to be his residence. The, the architect, E.G. Holliday, is the same architect that did the Mano Tu House, which is on the corner of East Elizabeth and Palm Boulevard, the Castillo Law Firm office, and if you notice the, the brick and the style, that you, you can see the similarity in the two buildings. So, this, this, this site could easily be a state or, or even a national site because of the documentation we have on the architect and the, and the history of this, this home. Eight, eight, yep, next. This is a, was a secondary local site last year, the, it's going to be a law office, Trey Mendez will have his law office here, it's on, on Elizabeth Street between Second and Third. That whole block is, is still pretty much intact as far as what it looked at the turn of the century. I know Trey Mendez will keep this building maintained, and so the Heritage Council and the P&amp;Z all, both recommended that this be received as a primary local site. Next. This house on West Washington, twelve forty-eight West Washington, is the Dr. Merrill House, and it just, it's between the, on the back of the, across the alley from it is Larry Loth's home, which is a state site, and in front of it is Javier Salinas' home, which is a federal site. So, this is a creation of a historic district, or the start in, in our West Brownsville neighborhood, and so it's a, it's, the, the West Brownsville residents are very proud that, that this, this is, this is the beginning of their historic district. Next. The Cameron County, I received a call from Frank Beherano from the Cameron County, they have a, they have a designated area for El Campos Santo Viejo. As you know, when they were doing construction, they found that this site was probably older than, than our Campos Santo, El Panteón, that we know on, on Fourth and Madison. And the, next picture, please. There's the Lutheran Church on the corner, that's Twelfth and Monroe, so it's between Twelfth and Eleventh on each side, and they, they wanted the city to recognize this as a historic site, and certainly, I, I think the site deserves a local designation, is historic, a historic place. So, tho- those are the changes that we have on, for this year, and the, the rest of the plan is, is the same as it was the year before. Are there any questions?
I have a question. This site, this is the one across from the Dancy Building, correct, where they found it? Be it Old Cemetery?
Exactly. Show the, show the next picture, please. I'm standing on the, on the steps, on the Monroe Stri-, on, on the courthouse, and across the street is that site.
There was some discussion at some time to build a playground over it, are they going to do that afterwards?
They, they can't, they cannot build anything on it. In fact, the, the reconstruction that they did was everything above ground, they, they built it up two feet, so they wouldn't disturb anything on the, on the ground. So, it's what you see is, is raised, a raised new level.
So, nothing will be built over it?
This is, that's, that's all they, that's all in one of them.
It's a state, yeah, it's a state archaeological site.
Are we going to place a marker of some sort, describe what it's about?
As a matter of fact, the, the reason Joe put them on the list is the county called, and they wanted, they wanted to put their own marker on there, but of course, you don't just put a marker on, so they wanted to know if the Heritage Council would be good enough to give them a designation so that they could go along and get a marker with it. Yes, they, the, the whole intent was for the marker, absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you. Move to close? We have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, this action item, can I have a motion?
Would approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, next item?
There was an abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight? Yes, thank you. Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-two dash S to allow a professional office specific use in a dwelling G subdivision in section two for lots one and two of block seventeen of Valle de Auto, the Auto subdivision located at forty-seven thirty-three Morningside Road.
Honorable Mayors and Commissioners, the application here before you is for a daycare center located here on, on this, on this part of the Morningside Road. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application for your approval. This is a public hearing.
Just a lot of traffic, well, this is a public hearing, but anybody here for or against? Can I have a motion to close?
Second.
Their motion, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item, can I have a motion?
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Atkinson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-three to rezone from dwelling Z to general retail G, one fifty-two acres out of lot one of J.T. Canales subdivision number one, located at one thousand, at ten thousand forty U.S. Military Highway two eighty-one.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this property is on West Brownsville on U.S. two eighty-one, the applicant would like to have a small grocery store on this site, the planning zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and here's the site, here shaded in red, this is U.S. two eighty-one, seventeen thirty-two.
Okay, this is a public hearing? Move to close? Wait a second, I'll have to ask for the motion, right, is there anybody here for or against? Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Samora, and a second by Commissioner Longoria. Make the motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item, can I have a motion?
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, please, ten?
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-five to rezone from medium industrial J to light industrial J, for point ninety acres out of block fifty-five of tract two for Los Ebanos Properties located at nineteen twenty-five South Price Road.
Honorable Mayor, in this, in this zoning request, the applicant wants to have some office space, the medium industrial does not allow that, so they're downzoning to industrial J, so they could have their, their, their offices. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. The property is right behind the administration building of B.I.S.D. That's the building right there.
Okay, this is a public hearing? Anybody here for or against this item? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd move to close public hearing. Second.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Traiany. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item? Can I have a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Traiany, second by Commissioner Atkinson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eleven, please.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-six to rezone from dwelling G to apartment G, two point five acres out of block twenty-seven for El Hardin subdivision located at thirty-three forty-four, forty-seven Coffee Port Road.
Honorable Mayor, in this application, the applicant would like to have some apartments. Part of the property is, is already zoned, as you can see from, from the, from the map here, they're just thinking to apply for this portion of the property that is unzoned, so the, for apartments, so they're gonna, so they can build their apartments. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application, this is a public hearing.
Okay, anybody from the audience for or against?
Would approve.
Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, what is it?
Would approve.
Camarillo, Camarillo, okay. Second by Commissioner Samora. All in favor to close?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item, can I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traiany. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, please.
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash six zero four dash CU to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol for lot four of block one of the Omni Pavilion subdivision located at nineteen hundred North Expressway seventy-seven eighty-three, suite A.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this is a conditional use permit to allow a bar on this particular property on, on Omni Pavilion subdivision. The planning zoning commission approved this conditional use permit, and it's here before you as a public hearing.
Is that where the boot jack is?
Yes.
This is, this is a, a public hearing? Anybody for or against? Please, this is a public hearings for.
Mr. Bedina, first of all, is there a re, another bar there? Is there another liquor place there that sells liquor?
There's several, yes. I believe two, two other establishments were there, but they're closed now.
My question is, I used to take dialysis people there, there is a dialysis clinic there, and I noticed when the other place was open there, they threw beer bottles and everything, and I think the city of Brownsville needs to consider that we do need jobs, but I think the most important thing is that this is not the kind of job opportunities we need in Brownsville. We have enough cantinas all over the place, and we have too many people drinking and driving in Brownsville, and it's hard for the police department to keep up with all of this. So, I asked you to consider some kind of, we don't know the whole extent of the, what's going to happen here. We don't, I don't. I just know they just want to sell liquor. Is it hard liquor, beer, that's the whole thing. And I ask you to consider that and think about it. Postpone it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good eve, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Glad to see you all here tonight. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, I'm not the applicant, but the applicant is here, and it's Mr. Beherano, he's, he's a Brownsville native, born and raised, he's a successful entrepreneur, he started off as a, as a bar helper, and kind of worked his way up, got, saved his money, and opened up a, a bar that, it's a bar one fifty-one over on Price Road, right behind Furs, he's been operating that business there for about five years now, successfully, he employs, depending on whether the, the business is up or down, between thirty-five and fifty people at any given time, and Mr. Beherano's a responsible business owner, he also has a distributor for, for sodas and waters for different restaurants around town. Mr. Beherano's looking to open up this business and continue the same practices which he ha- has followed, which is to be a, a responsible, professional business owner, and to provide good place for people to go there with their wives, with, with anyone they like, to have a good time, and I can assure you on behalf of Mr. Beherano and his group, that, that he'll maintain a good environment, and will, he'll comply with all the, the requirements that the city requires, and, and we're basically here for any questions, if you have any questions or, or the public does.
Okay, does anybody have a question?
I have some questions for Mr. Bedina.
Ben?
How are we doing with the parking situation, like what, what was mentioned, there are a number of bars there, so what are the requirements?
This is a, a plaza with available space for other businesses. Basically, right now what we're, we're applying for is the, the permission to sell alcohol, it's a conditional permit, only for the alcohol. He has proper zoning, but what, what he'll do when he goes and gets his building permit to renovate, he'll submit a site plan review, and they'll calculate all of the uni, all of the parking spaces in that complex, and then he will also have, through formula, will know how many spaces they'll need, only for his particular businesses, for his business, his bar, and then they'll calculate as to how many are available, and how many he'll need to provide or reduce his space in that, and that, what he's renting. But that's, that's the site review.
And I had a discussion this morning with a patron who was concerned that some of the establishments there didn't have a sprinkler system, so because all the businesses are connected, that does concern me, because if one starts fire, then of course, it's all, it's going to be one after another, so can, can you enlighten me on those requirements?
Yes, that's an excellent question. Basically, that's also a, a process of his building permit. Part of the site review is, is not only building official, but it's the fire marshal, or zoning department, or city engineer, and they sign off on the particular portions that pertain to them, and if the fire marshal deems necessary that he needs a fire sprinkler, then he will have to comply that before the permit, you know, before he opens.
Okay.
May I have a, a question, or maybe two? Ben, the, the space that the applicant is looking at, you know, getting this permit, has, has there been any other type of business at that place, is it, it's never been rented or leased before?
I think it was an AT&amp;T store.
It was, okay. Another one, another question, I know this is more for Mr. Gamas, but do any of these businesses have to have insulated floors?
On the commercial buildings, which are foundations, the only thing that is required, Commissioner, is the, your vapor barrier on your frame, commercial- Commercial businesses, according to the, or in reference to the two thousand six energy code, it is required to have that.
That are on foundation?
No, no. I'm talking about the ones that are on pier.
On piers?
Yes. They're required to have. Now, if they're on foundation, the only thing that is required is your vapor barrier. That's all.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Thank you.
You finished?
Yes, Mayor.
These buildings over there, that were built before the ordinance came, would you have to have the sprinklers?
Correct.
And now, like says, this bar comes and goes away, and the next bar comes. I know in the past, there was problems because there were, what are y'all doing now as far as the city, since this building was built without sprinklers, and they, obviously, for the last five, eight years, there's been bars there? Are we, we're allowing them to rent from there even though there's no sprinklers? Is it because of grandfather clause, or what?
On this one, since it's a new one, even though the building is existing, it is required to have a sprinkler system. Okay?
But the adjacent buildings don't have sprinklers?
Correct. On this one, since it's a bar, on bars, bar and grills, dance halls, or anything like that, it is required to have...
Do these people have to add these sprinkler systems before they even rent it out?
Correct. It's supposed to be installed.
So why would they put them in there if something they're renting?
Well, you see, on this, it's retail. They start with retail, and that's why they're here, because they want to say special use on this. So only for the alcohol. When they serve alcohol, and they serve food, it is, a sprinkler system is required. If it was only gonna be something else, retail, office use, clinic, it's not required.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Would it close?
Second.
Close, Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item, can I have a motion?
Would approve.
Second.
Motion to close, I mean, motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen, please.
Item thirteen, Public Hearing in Action to authorize the issuance of a new taxicab permit for Mr. Isaac Diamante for a two thousand and three Ford Taurus that will operate for American Taxi.
Mayor, members of City Commission, good evening. Mr. Isaac Diamante has applied for a new taxicab permit for a two thousand and three Ford Taurus. He has met all the prerequisite that are required by the city ordinance to include the advertisement in the local newspaper.
What's the oldest that can use as far as vehicle?
It is twelve years from the year...
Twelve years?
Twelve years is the oldest. So two thousand and ten minus twelve would be nineteen ninety-eight would be the oldest.
Okay, this is a public hearing?
Would it close?
There are a motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traiani. All in favor to close?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item?
Would approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Traiani. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item fourteen, public comments.
Item fourteen, public comment.
We have Mr. Desti and Mr. Resendez, two people.
Roberto Desti, twelve twenty, Caillou Pluton, Galaxia Subdivision. First of all, gentlemen, on the swimming pool, Sams, I remember when I went to the swimming pool in nineteen fifty-five, I think, I got to see it built. And it seems like we've been trumping all this money because we made bad decisions. This commission needs to be understanding that you're wasting money. Whoever did the change and lost money, remember, this park was supposed to cost three million, went up to nine million, twelve million, and it seems like there's no cost. Quality of life was not here. If I was the commission, I would fire those people. Very simple. I would not hesitate with that. Number two, highway. The military road finally is being built, started today. I'm very happy about that. I don't know how long that project is gonna take, but the people of the west side of Brownsville are gonna enjoy it when they get it. And I hope it does, we can fulfill that promise. And now for the animal. Dogs and cats. This commission needs to start coming up with ideas how to prevent what happened, and is being put in the newspaper and television about animal cruelty. This commission has not, and has never, I haven't heard, a very good idea of how to stop the selling of dogs everywhere, at the flea market, on the roads. None of you have done anything about that. And that needs to be brought up as an ordinance to end this. And also, we need to bring something that China has, the one child. It seems to be that everyone should have only one dog or one cat in order to eliminate this problem. Some people have four, five, six dogs, and I think it's against the ordinance to have more than four dogs. And I, three. And I've been to some places, and I mean, every dog is ready to kill me because they got so many dogs, and they don't have the time to take care of them. So you need to come up and start now. If you wanna be like the plastic bags, then you need to start acting like a commission together. And this is what needs to be done. You all need to get together and make an ordinance, and that's it. It will take a long time. If you have more than three dogs, let them die, and then you can get one dog. But you need to do something, because what's going on needs to be ended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Resendez. Just a point of information, is the health director here?
Yes, sir.
Please give him with the last speaker and let him know what we've been doing, because obviously, he's not informed, okay? Thank you.
When my minutes start? Yeah? Okay. Wait a minute. Ready? Okay, okay, let's go. Three minutes. Okay. Bueno, para empezar, la gente pobre del South Most, y donde quiera aquí in Brownsville, we have to consider this. I could be wrong. El señor Atkinson, aquí, Charlie Atkinson, he just said something about forty-seven million dollars. ¿Cómo le llaman eso que le dan el gobierno?
Give me those money.
Stimulus. There you go, pet, you're sharp. Stimulus money. Ese dinero, dice él, que entra al POB, okay? I was talking to a fellow by the name of Simpson, okay? This Simpson, they say, I'm the bad guy, I mean, I'm the one that's contracting and doing this and doing that. According to Simpson, he does, he thinks Simmons.
Simmons?
Yeah, Simmons. Some big guy, mejor que Cárdenas, okay? He's a big shot. Okay. Este Simmons dijo, I'm the bad guy. Dijo, well, I don't know, you're building, and you're doing this, and you're doing that. No, 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 no. But the monies that I collect, from the impact fee that these guys are charging me, I collected from the poor people. So cada vez que vende propiedades en el South Most, y hace casitas y todo, according to him, si son five thousand dollars, o lo que sea, la gente pobre has to pay him. I don't know, I could be wrong. What are you doing with the money that comes in, the impact fees? ¿Qué están haciendo con el dinero? ¿Dónde está?
May I direct you to the...
It's going back to POB. I already know that, most of the money. If you got forty-five million dollars, como dijo Mr. Atkinson, verdad que I'm glad he brought it up, for POB, ¿dónde está el dinero de la impact fee? And I yield my time, I let you have, one minute, two minutes for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Resendez. Now, welcome for you to call POB, and I'll give you some information there. Okay, that's it for public comments. Then we move to item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to acknowledge the deputy city manager, chief financial officer's financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for the first quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nine.
Oh, Mayor, members of the City Commission, during the weekend, we distributed the report for you to look at. This report is for the first quarter and in December thirty-first, two thousand and nine. It has a memo that describes the activity for the first quarter, as well as all the funds that the city of Brownsville maintains. I do have a PowerPoint presentation regarding the first quarter financial report, and there are some concerns. And by the way, you also have a PowerPoint handout that you would like to look at in case the numbers are not very clear on the, up here. There are some declines in sales tax receipts. This is the worst-case scenario. It's about two point five million if the trend continues. There's declines in bridge revenues. There's also a small decline in building permits, one point three seven percent, but that compares to a decrease of sixty-four point sixty-five between two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. And of course, through the recession that's still with us, unemployment rate is still high. It has averaged about two point one through the first eleven months of the calendar year, which ended November two thousand and nine. As far as sales tax for the two thousand and ten year, we're looking at eleven point three seven percent lower than last year for the same period. We also look at the budget, it's down about twelve percent. So the average shortfall budget-wise is about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a month. That equates to, close to two, three million dollars by the end of the year, if the trend continues. We're hoping that for the next nine months of the fiscal year, that it will level off. It started leveling off in a sense that we only had a decrease of three percent in December. December figures here are actually for the November sales. We will not get the Christmas or December sale receipts until February. We look at the city's years when we had recessions, as well as passive evaluations, and one that comes to mind, obviously, the eighty-two recession, eighty-two passive evaluation. It took, it took the city of Brownsville six years to recover. There's another recession, passive evaluation that occurred in ninety-four. That, that one was a mild recession. It, it took us three years to recover. What is it looking right now, as far as, these are numbers from two thousand to two thousand and ten? The two thousand and ten number is, gives you the worst-case scenario whereby our sales tax will drop to about two, little over two million, two point five million. Hope, we're hoping that that number will be higher than that. But as you can see, we're following the same pattern that we have had on our last two recessions, the eighty-two and the ninety-four. We see a drop in sales tax. The bridge fund also shows a decrease of thirteen percent. If you compare the same period as last year, budget-wise, we're around ten and a half percent, or ten point nine six percent. And again, those, the best years that we had, the Veterans Bridge was in two thousand and six. It's slowly been, coming down ever since. Building permits, we had a not-so-good year in two thousand and nine. We had a decrease in, in construction of sixty-four, over sixty-four percent. How are we doing this year for the first three months of the year? We're down one point thirty-seven percent, but we must remember that we had a bad year last year, so construction is not where it used to be several years ago. As this chart indicates, we had a very strong year in two thousand and eight. Actually, we had good years from two thousand, all the way to two thousand and eight, where we were actually exceeding two hundred million dollars in building permits. It's slowing down now. We estimate about a hundred and twenty-five through the year two thousand and ten. Unemployment rates, obviously, it also impacts us. We enjoyed four strong years of single digits in two thousand and five through two thousand and eight. We're up again at ten percent. The November unemployment, based on the Texas Worst Force Commission, was ten point nine percent, but right now, we are averaging a ten point one percent for the calendar year, and of course, it only has eleven months through November. We also look at the peso, and we had a, the peso was strong on August sixth of two thousand and eight. We had the worst one in February of two thousand and nine. We, you look at percentage drop between August and February against the dollar, it went up, went down to about fifty-two percent. If you look at January, the day, we're down about twenty-eight percent, meaning the peso versus the dollar. One of the things that we'll probably be coming to you in the next few weeks is possibly doing some debt issuance, something that we are looking at very closely. I know that in two thousand and ten, there we don't have any monies for streets. It's very likely we're gonna have to add some, some numbers there. But again, this is coming up to you in the next, probably next month. Some of the things that we would like to do. As far as debt for the city of Brownsville, we have our debt outstanding for two thousand and ten is a hundred and sixty-one million plus, but only a hundred and fifty million is from property tax support, and the rest, eleven point three million is from self-supporting debt. General fund, which is our main fund for the city of Brownsville, the fund balance at the end of two thousand and nine dropped between two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine by about one point three million dollars. For two thousand and ten, even though our budget has a fifteen million dollar ending fund balance, because of our decrease in sales tax, that the budget has not been adjusted yet, we could end up the year with around twelve, twelve point five, twelve point six million. This is a general fund, fund balance summary for various years. Two thousand and nine, we saw, even though this are unaudited numbers, our auditors are still looking at our numbers, we had a reserve fund balance of one point three, unreserved, meaning the money that could be spent that was not reserved, fifteen point three million. At the end, at the end of the year, seventeen point three million dollars. As far as reserves, and this is something that, when we issue debt, something that the rating agencies look very closely, they wanna make sure that we're at least above the fifteen percent. We had some weak years, ninety-three, for instance, ninety-two, that's when we had the recession and the passive evaluation, the reserves were not that strong. As far as actual numbers for two thousand and nine are there, seventeen point three million or a nineteen point percent in reserves. Balance sheet for two thousand and December compared to two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten is reflected in that schedule. The budget for two thousand and ten has been changed, and the reason why it has changed is because we did have one point six million dollars that was earmarked or actually transferred from commitments from the previous year, which included purchase orders. And we also had, so far this year, we had a five hundred thousand dollar budget amendment going to the airport, and we also had a twenty-five thousand dollar budget amendment for the Imagine Brownsville. So now our fund balance, if you look at revenues versus expenses, we are, expenses are exceeding revenues by two point two million for those, for those reasons. And here again, we, this shows that we had encumbrances carried over of one million, six ninety-two, nine fifty-two, and those were purchase orders that were outstanding at the end of the year that are carried over to the fiscal year two thousand and ten. Right now, we show a reserve of approximately sixteen point three percent in the, in the general fund.
Where's the three million from POB?
Right there. See it? How are we doing as far as the first quarter? Well, of course, we, most of the revenues that we get are in property taxes. Those are the property taxes that come in the first three months of the year. That's the reason why we show a big plus between revenues and expenses. Obviously, that number will be reduced as the months, remaining nine months of the year. Convention and tourism, we're showing a small deficit of six point three, I mean, six, six, six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Community development, this is an Inana thing, these are all federal grants. We also have a new fund called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Fund, and this were similar grants from HUD and the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for weatherization and housing projects. This is, the non-bundled debt fund is just a fund that we use for, to take care of our lease purchases. We had ninety-three thousand at the end of December. The debt service, right now, we have a, a fund balance of four million, one sixty-seven, but there is a, a big payment that's gonna be made on our debt coming up in February, so that number is, obviously, will be reduced substantially when that payment is, is made in, in February. Of course, these are December numbers. Landfill tipping fee, we have a fund balance at the end of the December of six, almost seven hundred thousand. Airport, we are showing a, a, an expense exceeding revenues... Airport, we are showing a expense exceeding revenues by 500,000, almost $600,000. And we, obviously, we need to, the city commission did approve a $500,000 transfer that's not in there yet, so hopefully, that's going to be less, the deficit will be less. The bridge fund, obviously, we talked about it earlier. Right now, we have a $292,000. Motor vehicle parking system fund, we are showing revenue exceeding expenses by 81,588. Transit system, we show a loss of 1 million, little over a million dollars, but the feds, they pick up 502,321, and the remaining comes from the state of 375, general fund of 85,000, and then other miscellaneous revenues that make up the deficit. The golf center, we do show revenues under expenses by 64,000. I think that what happened this year is that our winter hasn't cooperated very well. It's been cold and rainy. Another area we want to look at is the medical insurance fund. Of important note here is the medical insurance claims that you see for 2009. We actually had a decrease in medical insurance claims between 2008 and 2009. And one of the reasons I believe that this happened is because we did change, we are now using a different network, and that network is giving us higher discounts. So, it's good for the city, maybe not be good for the provider, but that obviously is generating savings to us. So, that's a plus. We do have prescription drugs, obviously, are on the increase. But as far as the main one there is the medical insurance claims. And again, the last part here is the investments, what the city has invested, where it's invested its money, and the monies that we had as of December 31st of 2009. And that concludes my presentation.
I had one question, Pete, I'm sorry. Back to the medical insurance. Are you saying that fewer employees are using their medical insurance?
No.
Is that what that means?
We're saying that we are using a different network, United. United is giving us higher discounts, and that's my thinking right now, that that's what happened in 2009. I don't believe, maybe it was, maybe there were less people going to the doctor, maybe, less claims. But I believe that the main thing here is the change of networks that we used. Any other questions?
Would I acknowledge? Any other questions?
Thank you, Pete. This is an action item.
Would I acknowledge?
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Item 16.
Item 16, consideration in action to provide an exception to the moratorium on payday lending, car title loans, and check cashing businesses outlined in resolution 2009-073 to those areas within the city of Brownsville's own general retail 4C or higher.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, what this item does is it provides an exception to the moratorium we placed at the, in the December meeting via resolution. What this does-
Why do we want to provide an exception? I thought he was going to come back with a plan.
We're going to come back with an ordinance, the first draft of an ordinance at the next meeting.
So, then why is there an urgency to start already with the exception?
Well, we figure that, you know, in the time in between, the ordinance, the way we're looking at it is it's going to ultimately allow payday loan businesses and the like in areas zoned 4C and above. And so, we figured we may as well go ahead and just allow that to happen while we, you know, draft the ordinance, because that's where they're going to end up anyway. But we'll still have the restriction on 3C and below.
Would approve.
Oh, I haven't even asked for a motion. It's still in discussion. Okay. And Mark, you feel comfortable with this? I mean, you're the one that asked for the moratorium.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The reason we asked for the moratorium was to prevent a possible rush of people opening payday loan businesses throughout the city if we were to change the ordinance. The ordinance that we have, that we're going to be proposing to the city commission, is going to restrict payday loan, payday loan-type businesses to area zone C4 and above. The purpose behind lifting, limiting the moratorium would be to limit the same areas, I mean, would be, would be to permit businesses, opening payday loan businesses in the same areas that are going to be permitted by the ordinance.
But I thought we discussed here that we're going to look, setting up a criteria, like, for instance, the pawn shops to work. That way, we don't have a cluster in all C4 there, in areas congregating. There'd be criteria stating that you'd have to be a certain distance from the next payday loan.
Mayor, in looking at the, the issue is not so much the issue of clustering, the issue is clustering in low-income areas. One of the, one of the things that we have is if these entities were to group in heavy commercial areas of C4 or higher, you know, there's also an argument by having businesses of this type right next to each other, the competition could drive down interest rates. So, we're looking at more than one issue, Mr. Mayor. We think, what we're going to be suggesting to the city commission is that these type of businesses be restricted to area zone C4 and above. And having that type of restriction will resolve the issue.
But can't you have a commercial for in the poor areas?
Mayor, you can, and we have to work within, we have to work within the zoning maps that we have. We also have to treat similarly situated businesses similarly.
But what it seems to me is that you're regressing here with this exception here, not coming before the commission with a criteria defining how we're going to control this a little better, to where if your interest is to protect the low-income areas from clustering, I don't think this is going to do it if you can have a C4 and have 10 of them there in a low-income area.
Would approve.
I have not asked for the emotion.
But you're supposed to discuss after.
It's okay. I'm the chair, and I can have this discussion with the-
Move the question.
I can, I can have the discussion to, for the benefit of understanding of what's being proposed.
You don't want to follow Robert's rule of order, right? You're not going to follow Robert's rule of order?
City attorney?
I'm asking a question.
Is, am I out of, out of?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Atkinson has moved the question. That would put the question to an immediate vote under Robert's rules.
We have a motion.
What's your motion?
Motion approved. Based on what the city attorney was-
We have motion approved. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay. May I continue discussion, city attorney? Okay, I thought, I thought you were going to try to protect the low-income-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that just closed the debate. You would next move to vote on the issue.
I thought I could open it up for discussion after the motion, the second.
You've moved the question. That closes the debate and forces the issue to a motion.
Okay, well, I guess there's no discussion then in further interest of the public, because there's some people that would rather discussion not be had here in a healthy exchange. But all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay.
I did have a few comments, but I don't know what happened.
Well, there's people here that-
Can I still make a comment?
Obviously not. You wonder whose purpose they serve, but let the people decide. Next item.
All in your rules, Mayor.
Commissioner, you're here to serve the public, not yourself.
I just, I just had some comments to make about it, and I didn't have an opportunity to do that.
I understand that, but obviously, some people here don't want to hear the comments. Next item, please.
Item 17, consideration in action to authorize the Brownsville Fire Department-
I apologize, Commissioner.
-to donate old and obsolete equipment to the Matamoros Fire Department.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, we're here before you to be able to donate 20 sets of firefighter gear to the Matamoros Fire Department. This is old, obsolete gear. They don't meet the NFPA standards anymore. It's not stuff that we can use ourselves anymore. So, I-
May I have a question?
Okay, make the motion, and then we'll open it for-
Would approve.
Second.
We have motion approved, and a second by Commissioner Longoria. Okay, go ahead.
Chief, this equipment can be used for trainings or things like that, correct, by any word?
No, sir. If our firefighters were to use it here in the states, I'm required to provide them with NFPA-approved. They have to meet the standard. They can't be torn and all the other requirements. This is obsolete stuff. Most of it's over 10 years old, which I am required now to change out anyway.
Not a problem. Thank you, chief.
Any other discussion? Okay, Lenny, there's other stuff that's coming in that we cannot use, I understand. Can you have an inventory to bring to the commission? That way, we can, you know, in a proposal, maybe, to distribute the rest of the stuff?
Yes, sir.
I don't think an inventory would be proper for the city commission because it's overstepping our boundary. That would be with, between him and the city manager.
This is, this is inventory of stuff that's being donated, that's coming to the fire department, that we can donate to other, or stuff that you have that's obsolete.
No, 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 sir. If you're talking, there's an individual that I know of, that I heard, he's willing to donate to somebody, to Matamoros. We don't want to get involved in it.
Oh, okay. It was brought to my attention last night.
We don't mind telling the cities from across, there's this equipment contact, this individual, you handle it. Because if we get involved, then there's a liability issue, and I don't want to get the city involved in it.
Okay. Okay, so, any other stuff that you may have to bring?
I can, I can work on that, sir.
I'll work on that one.
Yes, sir.
It was brought to my attention last night at the-
Yeah, it's a great idea, but I'm trying to stay out of it, from mixing the city involved in it.
Well, anything I can do to help, let me know, okay?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Item 18.
Item 18, consideration in action to award a contract-
Thank you, chief.
-for construction of park restrooms at the North Brownsville Kickball Complex.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. Staff recommendation is to award a contract for construction of a park restroom building at the North Brownsville Kickball Field Complex of the, for the Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department to Herrera and Hunt Incorporated of Los Fresnos, Texas. This is an approved contractor under Choice Facility Partners of the Harris County Department of Education. This agency has an inter-local agreement with the city of Brownsville, and this is through the, through the job order contracting services that they provide, and is to design and construct a park restroom facility in the amount of $90,977,000. This construction project shall commence within 45, I'm sorry, this construction will be completed within 45 calendar days from the date of the notice to proceed. And I need, I need to, just to cover the funding, there's a change on the funding. Funding for this procurement will be available from the fiscal year 2008 Park Restroom and Concession Renovation Project Fund, account number 19-808-B-8354-13, which has a balance of $12,500, and the remaining balance of $78,477 will come from the Capital Projects Fund, which has been submitted for possible reimbursement from the BCIC through an application request for the fiscal year 2010 project, which is pending for approval. Staff recommendation is to approve this, this contract.
Can you have a motion?
Would approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Atkinson. Any discussion? This will make it possible to build them before the season starts.
That is correct.
Okay. Good job, city manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do. And thank you for bringing it to the attention of Commissioner Zamora. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Did you have something to say? Item 19.
Item 19, consideration in action to authorize amendment number four to the Brownsville Urban System Bus Site Storm Sewer Utility Package for the Brownsville Multimodal Terminal Project.
The recommendation, staff recommendation is to authorize amendment number four to the Brownsville Utility System, Urban System, I'm sorry, Site Storm Sewer Utility Package from the Brownsville Multimodal Terminal Project to Spoglass Contractors Incorporated out of Harlingen, Texas, in the amount of $1,998,113. The funding for this procurement is available from the 2009 American Recovery and Rehabilitation Act grant, award number TX-96-X013. No local match is required for this request. I'll be more than happy to-
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longoria. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussions? Any questions? None?
Actually, the only question I have is, the amendment is simply to, what exactly is the amendment?
The amendment will, if you see on the, on the analysis, part of the agenda, it will, it will make the change to the GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price, that it's under this contract for the, for the contractors, Spoglass contractors, to finish with the first phase of the project for the multimodal facility. And that includes, the 1,998,113 includes the demolition phase, and now, it includes the storm sewer utility package.
Okay, so, this is simply for the demolition and the placement of the storm sewer, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
No foundation work, no anything else like that?
No, that's, that's only for the guaranteed maximum price for that, those portions of the project.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Everybody has any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 20, consideration in action to award a contract for renovation of Sam's Pool, located at Dean Porter Park.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the renovation of Sam's Pool, located at the Dean Porter Park of the city of Brownsville, to Aquatic Commercial Solutions Incorporated out of San Antonio, Texas, a low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount in the amount of $118,500. The contractor is obligated to commence work immediately after receiving the notice to proceed, and will complete renovation within 50 calendar days. Funding for this project is available from the Capital Project Fund, number 45-513-911. Parks staff recommends the award.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Would approve.
Second.
Motion approved, and a second. Charlie, you want to, because I think there was unfair criticism launched at you particularly by a speaker. Would you want to explain to the public a little bit of what's going on there, so people can understand that?
Why, what speaker?
Mr. Reston.
On the pool?
On the pool, yes.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't listen to him.
You might want to explain what's happening, why it's happening.
Historically, the pool was lifted when the Dean Porter Park renovation project began about 1998 or so. The idea was to cut some of it for a, for a pool to be utilized by not only children, but ADA compliance in relation to children with disabilities and things like that, and then to have the other pool separated and utilized by the more grown-up and more professional people, St. Joseph Swim Team, et cetera. When they did that, of course, it was a historical pool, it's quite old, and when it was put back, we had issues with a lady with a joint under the, in the water that we saw we were losing water. So, for the last five years, we've done minor maintenance on the pool to able to alleviate leakage of water, and it's been, it's worked, it's worked very well, 1,500 or less per year to keep the pool going. And as you know, last year, we had to shut it down because that kind of maintenance was no longer feasible. We were going to lose all the water, et cetera. And it requires tons and tons of water to keep that pool going. So, we went out on bids, and there's very few people that are going to bid on this because there's not many people that want to touch a pool of this age. It's either that or, or get another pool built, which is going to cost millions. And we feel we have, we have a company in line that can do this for us with a one-year warranty, but understanding that if we maintain the pool and keep it, and keep it maintained, and assure our people that, that they will maintain this, the pool, we feel we have a seven-to-two-year lifeline on the pool, at $100,000 more or less cost. So, we have many people that are telling us that that pool needs to be open. It is part of the history of the park, and we feel this is the best option for us at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, I'm just concerned with the frequency of repairs and the amount of money we continue to pump into the repairs. At what point do we say it's a wash and we build a new pool?
Well, like I said, the repair, the repair, the repair was a maintenance issue that we were fully aware we were going to have. I don't, we don't, we have never come to the commission before for any substantial amount of money to get this pool down, or, or, what we want to do now is remove the existing plaster and replaster the whole pool, so we don't have to be worried about that joint, because that joint is no longer maintainable. It's, it's, we need to, we need to get that covered. And we, what I, what I said earlier, the maintenance on the pool over the last five years has been very minimal. It's just our people doing, every year, we have to, we had to go down there and make sure that that, that joint was, was not leaking, because the expense is not the repair, the expense is losing the water. So, after five years or so, we, we saw that maintaining, maintaining it the way- So after five years or so, we saw that maintaining it the way it was was no longer feasible. We had to do repair. And all the other work that was done before this was not done by us. It was done through the Dean Porter Park-
Renovation.
Renovation project. They invested 500, 600,000 dollars into this facility through grant money, et cetera, that was awarded to them back then. State-of-the-art work. The only concern now is the actual pool and the water. Everything else is been working very functional. And it is a pool, as you know, during the summertime, that is demanded by our community. In lifting the pool, that was a big chance that it was taken back then because obviously, it's an older pool. But it was done for all the good, for all the good reasons and good causes that we see now, which is, we have an independent pool for children and also for children of, that have- Sorry? Special need children are utilizing the smaller pool. And then we have the bigger group using the other pool, the kid, the children, the young adults that are into swimming, either for rehabilitation of possible injuries they may have, or they're competitive in nature in relation to their school, so things like that.
In all fairness, for those who are watching, as the Speaker was saying that we should fire people because of what's going on there. But in all fairness, this was way before your time, before any of us here. This happened in 1998 during the renovation of the pool. It caused some problems, and through the years, it's been dealt with at a minimal cost. But now, you have come up with a plan that addresses and hopefully will fix the problem without having to disperse huge amounts of money to replace a pool in the amount of $2 million or whatever. And for the price of 100, how much? 118,000. You think you can solve the problem that will save us that kind of expense? And I want to thank you for working at it.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor, Commissioners, but this is part of the legacy of the Dean Porter Park is the pool. The first thing you see when you drive in through the main entrance is the pool signs and-
And these things happen. I mean, they thought they were doing the right thing by lifting the pool and doing the renovation. Turned out, it was the wrong decision to make, but we're stuck with that decision and-
I'm not sure if it was a wrong decision. It was a decision made based for all the good reasons, like I noted earlier.
Right. We're dealing with it.
Putting it back in place, some portions of the pool had to be cut to interact, other plaster, cement. There had to be joints installed, more vents installed. But we feel we got five years of use by doing minimal maintenance work on that joint that was leaking water. Five years went by, but now it's time to do something else with it. And I think this is the feasible thing for us to do.
Well, thank you for bringing the solution. Commissioner Gavin?
I think it's important to point out that the choice of what to do back then was not a bad, or it was not a bad choice. They did not have the funding, and they did explore the possibilities of building a new pool altogether at that time. But at the time, the funding wasn't in place, and that was what was the best solution for the time. And the kids in that neighborhood, you're right, do need that pool, especially during the summer. Otherwise, they don't have any place to swim.
The young adults, the children, not only in that area town, but all, we only have three pools in the city.
That's Oliva, this one, and one side?
Los Salles.
And now hopefully, the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, the pool at the Boys and Girls Club, it's not going to be, it was left unattended so many years that it is a severe place. It's not salvageable.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. A motion, Attorney? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.